Special meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any? Well, I forgot that. Will the clerk, please call the roll first?
Councilmember Chilson?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Hutchings?
Present.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Carey?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. An allego down to, are there any changes to the agenda? Saying none, are there any council objections to approving the agenda? Hearing and saying none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Vice Mayor Parker, do you have a motion to make?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Carey. I would, um, Mayor Whitney, I apologize. Getting up early and starting work early. Anyway, I apologize, Mayor Whitney. I move to allow the interviews to be conducted in person or through video teleconference.
May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Vice Mayor Parker, can we have your report?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. As you all recall, we started this process back in November, December. The mayor appointed myself, Councilmember Hutchings, Councilmember Ruffridge to a subcommittee to begin the search to replace our previous city clerk. We interviewed, we advertised extensively in Alaska through Alaska Municipal League, local newspapers. The original cutoff date was mid-December. And at that time, when we were advertising, we had a mid-December cutoff date. But we also said we would leave the application process open until we felt we had sufficient candidates to bring back to the council. And so at that time in mid-December, we had not received the, a good candidate or candidates to bring back to the council. So we left it open. After the holidays, we started to receive more applications. And we brought forth to the council these three applicants that we'll be interviewing this afternoon. We have prepared and you have before you questions, which we will be asking each of the applicants. Once we are through with the interview process, we will then convene into an executive session and discuss what our next steps will be. I would be happy to answer any questions or would defer to Councilmember Hutchings or Ruffridge if they have anything else to add.
Could you address the reason why we're going to do interviews in person or through video?
So the council had originally, when we talked about this at our last council meeting, decided that we were going to be, we wanted to do all of the interviews in person. When staff started reaching out to our applicants, we found out one of the applicants is out of state and will not be returning until February 8th. Another applicant, when reached by staff, was told they were not feeling well and wouldn't feel comfortable, but would defer and see how they were doing today. When staff spoke with him this morning, the applicant was still feeling not well and had asked to attend by Zoom as well. And since we had made the decision to allow one applicant to attend by Zoom, allowed the other applicant to attend by Zoom as well. The other applicant will, has indicated they will be here in person.
Are there any council comments? Are there any council objections? Saying none, the motion passes by unanimous consent. And we will have interviews conducted in person or through video conference. Next item on the agenda is city clerk, city clerk candidate interviews. Although the city clerk interviews are open to the public, candidates to be interviewed are strongly encouraged not to attend the interviews of other candidates. In accordance with AS 44.62.310 C2, if the interview questions or answers turn to a subject that may prejudice the reputation or character of any person, the council may choose to continue the interview in an executive session as long as the individual being discussed has no objection to the executive session. Having said that, we will now open into the first interview. And that will be with Patty Burley. That will take place through Zoom. And Ms. Burley, are you online with us? And that sure looks like my cat sitting there on the stairways.
I am. Let me see if I can start the video on this.
Oh, there you are.
Hello. Hi, how are you today?
Good. Thank you for your application and appearing here for this interview. I'd like to introduce the members of the council who are here. And to my left is Councilmember Linda Hutchings, and then followed by Councilmember Dan Nelson and Councilmember Jordan Chilson. To my right is Vice Mayor Parker, then Councilmember Dave Carey and Councilmember Justin Ruffridge. Also present is the acting city clerk and the human resource director. And so we will start with the questions. Are you ready to go?
Yes, thank you.
First question is, please take a few minutes to tell us about your experience, which prepared you to apply for the Saldana City Clerk position. Please include what you know about the city of Saldana, our government structure and process.
Thank you. So I have been working in municipalities for about 14 years now. I have worked previously for the city of Bethel and after that for the Kenai Peninsula Borough. So I have extensive experience with municipal governments. I am very well familiar with how they operate, how they're governed by Title 29. I know that the city of Saldana is a first-class city, which gives it pretty much maximum powers as far as municipalities go. I know that you have been looking for a city clerk for several months now and that the city clerk is vital to the city council. They're who are your first line. They're who keeps your minutes, who makes sure that your municipal code is up to date. That is who the public usually interacts with for elections. They do the training after election. So I have a lot of experience, excuse me, a lot of experience in all of those areas.
Thank you. We will move on to the next question from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. If you could tell us, what is your experience with the election process from the municipal clerk's office perspective?
So that, in that sense, it is limited. I have assisted as an attorney, not as a clerk. However, I have been actively involved assisting in elections. I have volunteered whenever there has been help needed. I have worked as a poll worker. I have helped to count ballots. So although my job as an attorney was not the same as the job that the clerk would have to do, I do understand that it is critical that we have elections and how important it is. So I was always, always there to assist as much as possible whenever it was needed.
Thank you. If you would, would you please walk us through a detailed timeline of the clerk's role in the regular election process, beginning with candidate filing and ending with election certification?
Yes, ma'am. So the way that I've always experienced it is that the clerk keeps track of when candidates' terms expire. They ensure to follow the code as far as timely notice to the public that candidacy vacancies are coming forward, including reminding current incumbents that your terms are getting ready to expire, making sure that, are they eligible? In some municipalities, you can't, you have term limits and some you do not. The clerks timely advertise for vacant seats. They take in candidate applications. They verify them against the code. Do they meet the minimum criteria? If there's, aren't missing and it's still within the deadline, they let that potential candidate know so that they have time to fix it if it's still within the deadline. If not, they give them written notice. They prepare the ballots. They oversee the election process. They oversee the counting of the elections. They bring the final results to the city council. So the city council can then ratify the election at their first meeting following the municipal vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next question will be from Councilmember Hutchings.
What is your experience with Robert's Rules of Order or parliamentary procedure? Would you consider your level of experience as a beginner, intermediate, or expert?
I would consider my experience to be expert. It is what I have worked with for well over a decade at this point.
As a follow-up, please answer the following questions. A motion to reconsider. How would you handle?
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what the question is.
First, I'm sorry. Explain the process of a motion to reconsider.
So in a motion to reconsider, I apologize because, so I came from parliamentary procedure to the Borough, who had a way different than parliamentary procedure. A motion to reconsider, typically, if I recall, my parliamentary procedure requires a second from the side that prevailed. And it requires then a vote of the full council before it can be reconsidered and debated.
Okay. And the next question is, if a chair is making a parliamentary error during a meeting and you were aware there is an error, how would you handle the problem?
By politely speaking up and saying, excuse me, I believe that the rules state that you don't make a big deal of it. You don't try to embarrass anyone. You simply speak up and we go over the rules quickly and quietly together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question will be from Councilmember Nelson.
What is the biggest mistake you ever made at work? Explain to us what happened and why that mistake comes to mind. What lesson was learned?
I had two coworkers, colleagues, that were very much not getting along on a contract that was about to blow up. And at the same time, a new contract was about to get awarded to the same contractor. And it was, it was about to be a very costly mistake. And they each kept calling me and they each kept trying to complain about each other. And I kept saying, I, please don't, please don't, please try to work it out. And the thing was heading into disaster. And the only person that could make a decision on that was the mayor. So I scheduled a meeting with the mayor to resolve it. The mistake I made, and it was a really big mistake. It was very insensitive, it was very rude, was I didn't warn them about that meeting and I didn't give them a heads up so they could prepare. That was extremely rude and very insensitive to the fact that they were the department directors. They were the people in charge of what they were doing. A simple phone call, a simple courtesy, rather than let my frustration of the two of them not speaking to each other and getting along with each other, would have gone a long way. And it took a while to repair that trust and it took a while to, to just feel right about myself on that. These two had earned their position. The fact that they didn't see eye to eye on this position did not give me the right to bring them before the decision maker without the courtesy of a heads up. They said, I realize you're at an impasse. I realize that we're at a standstill on this contract and it's headed to a big problem. It would have taken 30 seconds to give them that courtesy and they deserved that.
Next question would be from Councilmember Chilson.
Thank you. I would ask that while holding a publicly held position, you would be expected to interact with members of boards, commissions, and citizens on a regular basis. What would you need to consider when communicating with these audiences in your official capacity as a clerk?
What I have learned from years of dealing with the public is if you have a bad day, they don't ever need to know. The public never needs to know it. Your life is on a magnifying glass. You are there for the public. You are there to serve. My opinion on any subject belongs in the privacy of my home with my husband and no one else. My public opinion is whatever the majority of the council says it is. I am there as a clerk to respect the city council, period. Anything else would be disrespectful to the city council. So the public needs to always see me smiling, always see me polite, always see that I am there to help. If, if even one time you lose your temper, if even one time you don't put your best foot forward, that one time is what they're always going to remember. If one time you say something negative, that's what is going to be remembered. So best foot forward every day, bright smile, bright sunny disposition. And the public will always feel that it's okay to come in. And as long as you support your city council, the public will remember that that's who you work for.
Okay, thank you. And then one follow-up to that. How would you initiate a difficult conversation with a council, board, or commission member, coworker, or a member of the public with whom you disagree on an important topic or issue that must be addressed?
I've had to have those and they're not pleasant, but with as much, you just have to come in and respect and say, we have this, we don't see eye to eye on this. Or, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood something. Can we please review this? I believe there might be a misunderstanding.
Okay, thank you.
The next question will be from Councilmember Carey.
Thank you for applying for this position. My question, if an election will take place in two weeks and you discover a discrepancy between the city code and state statute that afflicts, that affects voting procedures, how would you handle the issue?
I would start by speaking to the city manager about what the process is for speaking to the attorney. And I would seek legal advice from the attorney as to what the proper format is. Because an error in elections can be extremely costly to the city of Saldana or any city.
Thank you.
Our next question will be from Councilmember Ruffridge.
Thank you. Have you ever been given work-related feedback by a supervisor that you had something specific that you should work on as an area of improvement?
I'm sure I have. I've been working for many years. Thing is, I didn't really get evaluations in the city of Bethel and at the Kenai Peninsula Borough. I wrote my own and then we went over it and she actually always disagreed and marked them better. So I apologize, I'm sure that I have. I just can't think of things. But I'm positive that there are things that I could do better.
Just a follow-up. If you did receive feedback on areas of improvements, how do you feel you would react? Or do you feel like that feedback would have merit, in your opinion?
Always, always. We, we, there is no doubt that we can all do better in our jobs every day. Otherwise, what's the point of the evaluation system? It just makes us a better employee. So feedback is very much welcome.
The next question is from me. Oh, no, excuse me. It is from Vice Mayor Parker.
Sorry, thank you again, Ms. Burley. Please explain your experience supervising others.
It's actually been a very long time since I've supervised others. Not since I worked at the Association of Village Council Presidents. So I have not supervised others in probably a decade or more. But I have. I supervised about 20 to 30 individuals. I had to manage their, whether they were seeing clients, whether they were staying within budget, whether they were meeting their deadlines. I've had to fire people, had to hire people, do their evaluations. So I have done it, but it has been a significant period of time since I have done it.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, how would you describe your management style?
I am not a micromanager. I tend to trust people know what their jobs are and I am very open, open door. I do like to get to know what they do, make sure that they're doing what they're doing. But for the most part, if they've been doing the job for a while and they don't seem to need help, then I'm going to trust that they're doing what they need to do. I'm going to, of course, ensure that deadlines are met. But otherwise, I am not going to be checking on them 24/7 or checking on them every few minutes. That just is not who I am.
The next question will be from Councilmember Hutchings.
Please share an example of how you helped coach or mentor someone and what improvements did you see in them?
So this one, I guess, is not as work-related. We took in a, not took in, I was a CASA volunteer for years. And there was a young boy that we, I was his CASA volunteer, but that relationship became very strong. And that child, we, I helped find a forever home for. I helped find a forever home for when he was 10. He is 16 now and still has a secondary home, I would say, in our home. He never really left us, even though he was never our foster child. We have become his mentor, which has made a big difference. We were semi-pseudo-adopted by his family because we had gone so close. That child was in a lot of trouble. That child had a very rough upbringing. And we have made a difference in his, it was the school would call our house, my house, and call me when he was getting in trouble at school, when he was having difficulties. Because I was the constant positive force in his life. I was the one that got him to do homework. I was the one that got him to stay out of trouble. And if he was, there were times when it was a bit sketchy whether that young boy was going to wind up in juvenile justice. But all it took was, what would Patty think of what you're doing? And that's all that the teachers or other mothers had to say. And that boy would straighten up. And I'm grateful that today he has a scholarship waiting for him and he is probably headed to college. And hopefully, not that college is the only road, but hopefully he is going to do something with his life in the future where, for a little while, we just weren't sure.
Thank you.
Our next question is from Councilmember Nelson.
Why do you believe that you are a strong candidate to be the next clerk for the city of Saldana? And the second part is, if you were to be selected for this position, when would you be available to start work?
I love municipal work. I love working in municipalities. I didn't know that until I started working for the city of Bethel a long time ago. But one of the things that I have always told my colleagues, when they find procurements to be, oh, why do we have to do this? I'm like, because it's not our money. And I really believe that. It is the people's money. Being a public servant is an honor. And I don't say that because it's an interview. Whether or not I get this job, if you met me on the street, you would know that with all my heart, I believe that. Being a public servant is an honor. That's why I'm drawn to this job. That's why I think that working for the city of Saldana would be an honor. I've met several of your coworkers and several of your, the people that work there and they love working there. And that says a lot about the city of Saldana, that you have very little turnover, that people are happy to go to work there. So it would be quite an honor to join an organization that has little turnover, that has consistent employees and that employees enjoy coming to work. Why me? I would give you 110%. It's who I am. I'm not the person that calls in sick. I'm not the person that takes time off work. I stay at a job and really stay at a job. If I were fortunate enough to be selected, I could start at the beginning of March.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this concludes the prepared questions we have for you today. And thank you for meeting with us to interview for the position as city clerk. And do you have any questions for us about this opportunity?
Not at this time, but thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and conclude the Zoom portion.
Thank you. Out of respect for the rest, I'm going to sign off. So thank you very much.
Good job. Question to the clerk, please.
I'm sorry?
A question to the clerk, please, if I could. I want to ask the clerk a question, could I, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you. The scoring, one through nine, is one the lowest and five the highest, or is it the reverse?
Through the mayor, one is the lowest, five is the highest.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion for a short recess while the next candidate is invited in to join us? I'm not quite sure how long the recess would last. I'm not sure where the next candidate is.
I'd so move.
Second.
Second? Mr. Nelson, thank you. We were, are there any objections to taking a short break? Saying none, we will be on a short break by unanimous consent. We have Mr. Aaron Dobrok here for the second interview. And I'd like to introduce everyone to you. I'm Mayor Paul Whitney. To my left is Councilmember Linda Hutchings, Councilmember Dan Nelson, Councilmember Jordan Chulson. To my right is Vice Mayor Parker, Councilmember Dave Carey, and Councilmember Justin Ruffridge. We also have present the acting city clerk right now. And coming in through the door here right now will be the Human Resource Director, Jessica O'Regan. So we'll start this out. I will ask the first question. And please take a few minutes to tell us about your experience, which prepared you to apply for the Soldatna City Clerk position. Please include what you know about the city of Soldatna, our government structure and process.
Well, I understand that you're a homeroom community, that you've built the city to be kind of a bit of a commercial linchpin in between a bunch of other communities, which is a great value to the region. And it seems like a very vibrant, very engaged community, which is, was really interesting to me. I noticed that you're a, you became homeroom only, I think, eight years ago, which is, gives the city a lot more flexibility to do things, like develop itself. In terms of being clerk, I think some of my experience, both in law school and then also as a young attorney working for the firm I was just at, gives me some of the tools to fulfill the clerk's duties. Particularly, you know, I dealt with a lot, sorry, I'm suddenly very nervous. But I dealt with a whole lot of, lots of filing. And during, during law school, we had to oversee student elections, which I know is one of the major, really important parts of the clerk's duty is making sure that the elections are fair and that you follow the Voting Rights Act. And then also, you know, state and local law related to carrying out fair elections. And then on the same, the same side of that, in addition to actually carrying out the letter of the law, you know, it's important to also avoid the appearance of impropriety. And I think, I, I think the past political experience in law school and then also a lot of the neutrality that we had to maintain in the law firm, learning from that, I think I would be well situated to kind of instill that confidence in the public, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, sir, for being here today. What is your experience with the election process from the municipal clerk's office perspective?
Typically, typically, my experience is when something either went wrong or that there was a concern that something would go wrong. The law firm I was at the last three and a half years advised municipalities. And so if there was a concern that there would be a challenge to an election, we would get called up. Fortunately, there weren't major challenges during the time that I was there. And so most of my experience has been on the legal research side of, okay, what, what would be the next steps if, if this progressed to a lawsuit or to a challenge, you know, some other sort of challenge? But, yeah, that's, that's the extent of my experience.
Thank you. And could you walk us through a detailed timeline of the clerk's role in the regular election process, beginning with candidate filing and ending with election certification?
Well, the clerk's there for all of it. I, the beginning would be receiving the filings for the candidate. Well, actually, prior to that, you would put up the notices. The clerk would put up the notices for the election, including the timeframes prescribed in law. Make sure that those are posted everywhere that they need to be. And then following that, the clerk would accept, would be accepting all of the applications. Would keep those updated as people, you know, because sometimes people decide not to run. Arrange for printing of the ballot, arrange for posting of details on, and maybe going out of order at this point. Arrange for posting of where the, where the polling location will be. Make sure that the ballots actually are secured, printed properly. Make sure that they get there on the day of, oversee the actual polling. And then oversee the vote counting. And then certify the election at the end.
Thank you.
Next question will be from Councilmember Hutchings.
Welcome. What is your experience with Robert's Rules of Order or parliamentary procedure? Would you consider your level of experience a beginner, an intermediate, or an expert?
I wish I could claim expert. I would say I'm probably intermediate. We've used it quite heavily in, I'm involved in a legal fraternity. And I actually run the Alaska statewide chapter for Phi Alpha Delta. In our meetings, we haven't had a lot of challenges where we've had to strictly enforce Robert's rules. But I've been to three biennial conventions. The biennial conventions, we do follow, we strictly follow Robert's rules in order to get things done on the international level. And so for those, I've, I've had, I've used Robert's rules somewhat. I, I will need to brush up more thoroughly before I serve as parliamentarian in a city council meeting, if selected. But I intend to be able to do that.
And a follow-up, please answer the following questions. First, please explain the process of a motion to reconsider.
Okay, motion to reconsider. The, the movement would seek recognition from the chair, be recognized, would make the motion, move to reconsider whatever they're defining to be reconsidered. I believe it has to be something within the span of the previous meeting or the current meeting, pardon me. That is then recognized by the chair that the motion is on the floor. If there's a second for the motion, the motion can then, and this is one of the things I would have to look up. Either the motion carries with a second or it has to be voted on. I think it has to be voted on in order to be reconsidered.
And the next question is, if a chair is making a parliamentary error during a meeting and you were aware there is an error, how would you handle the problem?
It may depend on the significance of the problem. If, if it's a parliamentary error that affects the outcome of, that would affect the outcome of a vote or the meeting itself, I would probably need to interrupt and mention the, correct the process, essentially. If it were something that, that is immaterial to the proceeding, I may talk to the chair after the meeting.
The next question will be from Councilmember Nelson.
All right, welcome. What is the biggest mistake you have ever made at work? Explain to us what happened and why that mistake comes to mind. What lessons were learned?
That is a broad question. Keeping it within recent experience, I think the biggest mistake was sending a pleading to the wrong person via email. The way that is rectified is by emailing back the mistaken person, requesting politely but firmly that they delete any and all copies, including the email just sent. And then going back and being very, very, very careful to reread emails before hitting send, email addresses before hitting send.
All right, the next question will be from Councilmember Chulson.
Thank you. While holding a publicly-held position, you would be expected to interact with members of boards, commissions, and citizens on a regular basis. What would you need to consider when communicating with these audiences in your official capacity as a clerk?
Well, there's a number of things to consider in that respect. I think foremost is, is whether or not you're communicating accurately and adequately to the, to the public. There's the obvious duty to fulfill the laws. But then there's also, you know, tone is also involved in that and candor. You know, I mean, if someone is asking for, you know, a public records request, you don't want to be mean to them straight out of the bat. But also, if they cannot, I mean, you don't want to be mean to them at all. But if it's, if it's something that they cannot have, you know, like a personnel record or something like that, there's an appropriate level of, no, we can't, we can't distribute that, I'm sorry. And if they still want it, you still have to say no.
Okay. And following up on that, how would you initiate a difficult conversation with a council, board, commission member, coworker, or member of the public with whom you disagree on an important topic or issue that must be addressed?
How would I initiate? Assuming it didn't come up in a, in a public meeting, I'd probably go talk to them. If it came up in a meeting and it was something where it was my duty to correct it, I would have to break in and chime in as appropriate to the, to the rules of order.
Thank you.
The next question is from Councilmember Carey.
Fine. An election will take place in two weeks. You discover a discrepancy between the city code and state statute that affects voting procedures. How would you handle the issue?
Oh, man, that, that sounds like a little bit of a nightmare, but very possible. I think the first two things I would do is I would contact the city attorney. And then I would contact, probably contact the city manager to see how it, you know, if this has been handled in the past and how it was handled in the past. This would probably be a phone call to the city attorney rather than an email because of the urgency. Yeah, and then I would probably go from there in following the attorney's advice on how to parse the, parse the code, whether or not, you know, because there's a possibility, you know, under federal law, state law, and city law, there's a possibility that one of, of the codes will either have been overturned by, by a court case or that one was written and is, is illegal. You know, that would be an easy, easy, an easier decision if the city code or the state statute had been overturned. But you have to find that. And I would need the attorney's help to do that, probably.
Thank you.
The next question is from Councilmember Ruffridge.
Thank you. Have you ever been given work-related feedback by a supervisor that you had something you should work on or an area of improvement?
Of course. I've, I've had a pretty broad career through, through retail and also through, you know, more, more recently, office work. And there's always, there's always things that can be improved upon. Sometimes it was customer service, sometimes it was writing style. I like to think that I've, I've met all of those challenges, but, that depends. I mean, that would depend on who's supervising me next to give me the next challenge to overcome.
In, in the moment that you were receiving that feedback, how did you react to that?
Well, it gets easier to take the more you've received it. I typically, I'll listen. I'll listen actively and I may have follow-up questions. But, yeah. Typically, I approach that honestly as, as an opportunity to grow rather than as an offense.
Would you say that the feedback that you received in the past had merit, in your opinion?
Generally, it does. You know, even, even if, I mean, there, there definitely have been times where I've disagreed with the feedback. But there, even when I disagree, there's usually something to it. And it's, it's always worth at least listening, you know. And it's critical to maintain a working relationship with your supervisors and also with your peers. And so I, I like, at this point, I like to approach that, you know. Just be honest, just listen. Take it in and see what can be done with it. You know, in a position like clerk, there may be feedback that can't be, can't be followed up on because it would violate duties. But you still have to be good to the person.
Thank you.
Next question is from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Could you please explain your experience supervising others?
Yeah, it, it varies. In most of my positions, I've, I've had times where I'm training someone to do something. Just about everywhere I've worked, from lifeguarding in high school through Starbucks, I've, I've been called on to teach skills. In terms of long-term supervision, I've had less experience with that, and it's more recent. But I, I've been called on to supervise co-workers either in projects or just in general. Generally, it's, it's rewarding. Sometimes there's people that are difficult to get along with. Sometimes there's people that are just, it's just effortless, you know. But you have to rise to that occasion. And it takes some creativity, particularly with people who can be difficult. You know, you just find common ground and figure out what they need to learn and what you can learn from them in the process and get the job done.
And if you could, would you describe your management style?
Relatively hands-on. You know, again, it would depend on the project, going off of the project-based idea. You know, there's, there's some things that you can set someone on to and follow up with them quite a bit later. And, okay, where are you at? Let's keep the ball moving. And then there's certain things that you have to be very, you know, if the details matter to a great extent, like an election, I would probably be much more hands-on. Either way, I would keep touch with the person to make sure that they're not lost and not out in the weeds somewhere.
The next question is from Councilmember Hutchings.
Please share an example of how you helped coach or mentor someone and what improvements did you see in them?
A recent example would be, our secretary at the, the law, the, the job I just left, the law group, we, when she first was hired, was really, really worried about drafting any type of document. any type of document. And to help get her through that, initially, I asked her, you know, I asked for her help making sure that my documents read well. Started having her review some of my documents. And she was happy to do that. And then, and then we started filling out, this was over the course of about a year and a half. We started filling out really simple things like form filings that would go to the court. Like, you know, not the will, but the form that gets attached to the front of the will when you're filing an original will with the court. Taught her how to get that worked out, you know, so that she would, to the point where she needed almost no supervision to get that perfect. And then, at this point, by the time I left, she was drafting small pleadings and important letters. So it was, it was, it was a hand-holding process to an extent in this case. And it was really rewarding. But it got her to the point where she was confident in her writing. Yeah, does that quite answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
The next question will be from Councilmember Nelson.
Why do you believe that you are a strong candidate to be the next clerk for the city of Soldatna? And if you were to be selected for the position, when would you be available to start work?
I could start as soon as you wanted me to, to answer the second question first. And then I think I'm a strong candidate because I bring an understanding of law. I bring an understanding of the ability to go and find what needs to happen if something unexpected comes up, which seems to be a greater possibility now than it may have been a number of years ago. But also, you know, I think, I think I come in with an attitude that we need to do things correctly, but we also need to be available for the public and a willingness to accomplish that. So I think, I think that as well is, would be an asset to the city. Yeah, finally, I just, I have a determination to do things the right way while minimizing the amount of offense that causes, if that makes sense.
Thank you. This concludes the prepared questions we have for you today. Thank you for meeting with us to interview for the position of city clerk. And do you have any questions for us about this opportunity?
Well, I guess the most obvious question would be, I know there's one candidate that went before me and one behind. And you may not have an answer yet, but how long do you expect to deliberate?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Following the interview of the candidates, the council will meet in executive session and we will have our discussion. And when we come out of executive session, we will explain then the next steps in the process. So by the end of our meeting today, you will know the next steps in the process.
Excellent. I'll be in town through tomorrow in case you need me. Is there anything, is there anything any of you would like to tell me about the position?
Nothing.
Or your city?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It seems like it.
Thank you for your time. We will move on to, yep, we're going to call a short recess here. We have a motion for at least a 10-minute recess while the next candidate is invited to join us.
So move.
Thanks. And thank you, Ms. Hutchings. We will, are there any objections to a short recess? Saying none, we will be in a short recess by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Move dig onto our Zoom for the interview.
Me out.
Good afternoon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Lovely.
I'd like to introduce everyone here for you. I'm Mayor Paul Whitney. To my left is Councilmember Linda Hutchings and Councilmember Dan Nelson and Councilmember Jordan Chilson. And to my right is Vice Mayor Parker, Councilmember David Carey, and Councilmember Justin Ruffridge. Also present is our acting city clerk, Brooke Hewitt, and the Director of Human Resources, Jessica O'Regan. And we'll go ahead and get started here.
Pleasure to meet all of you.
Okay. Please take a few minutes to tell us about your experience which prepared you to apply for the Soldatna City Clerk's position. Please include what you know about the city of Soldatna, our government structure, and the processes.
I'm familiar with the city and the structure. I've worked for Kenai as the city clerk for seven years. That was a couple of years back, which you are our sister city. I have also been familiar with Shelley. We've all worked in conjunction on the peninsula with Michelle and all of our staffs have gotten together and had many joint meetings to discuss the infrastructure of each and bounce ideas off of each other. So it's been really beneficial for us to work together. I worked with Shelley closely. So we shared a lot of the same documents, you being home rule and us being second class. There were differences, but for the clerk, the basics, meeting minutes, resolutions, ordinances, elections, it was all pretty similar, pretty similar responsibilities.
Thank you. The next question will be from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you for coming before us today. What is your experience with the election process from the municipal clerk's office perspective?
I'm working for a few municipalities. I've supervised both municipal and state. So the clerk's role is extremely important, training the election officials, making sure all the equipment is functioning properly, drafting the propositions, as well as creating the ballots, ensuring everything runs smoothly for the day. It's super important that all residents have the opportunity to vote. So being able to take ballots to individuals that aren't able to make it, I thought was really important. The absentee ballot, I think, was important as well as the mail. We also incorporated during my tenure in Kenai, fax ballots, which was beneficial for others that were out of town.
Thank you. If you could, walk us through a detailed timeline of the clerk's role in the election process, beginning with candidate filing and ending with election certification?
Let me think about that. Beginning would be submitting requests for candidacy. Then it would be either approval or denial, depending on the requirements of each community. Then they would have to submit an APOP at some point. It would then go to creating the list of candidates, of course, doing public notice and commercials over the radio. Sorry, I can't think of the name of it. And then it would be creating the election day. So notices for the election, having the propositions and ballots on notifications that are posted and placed in the paper. It would then be securing the precincts, making sure everything's available for election day, ensuring that you have the equipment, making sure that the election cards are programmed properly and testing those, receiving the ballots, testing the ballots. On election day, make sure that each precinct is open at the proper time. Again, checking each precinct to ensure that all the election officials have shown up for their duties. During the day, I would circle throughout the day just to ensure that everybody's okay. At the end of the day, it would be calling each precinct to ensure that they're closing out properly and to see if they needed any assistance. Then all of the election officials would bring the equipment to my office. They would submit it, get signed out, and the rest of it would be up to my department. Then we would go through everything, depending on the sign-in sheets, make sure that we have the ballots for everyone, basically just ensuring that we have all the information to send off to the borough or the election division. At the end, it would be placing everything on the website. We would do preliminary results for the community, which we would get several calls before we posted them. Then we would pack up all the equipment, place it in chambers. We would, then the following day, we would do a preliminary certification. Council and community would be able to review that. And then we would do a formal certification. And of course, there's notices for all of this and it would be advertised in the paper. The candidates that prevailed would be notified. Well, actually, all candidates would be notified. And a resolution would be drafted for council to approve as well as a certification. At the date of the next meeting, or maybe it was the second meeting, the candidates would attend the meeting and they would be sworn in.
Thank you.
The next question will be from Councilmember Hutchings.
What is your experience with Robert's Rules of Order or parliamentary procedure? And would you consider your level of experience beginner, intermediate, or expert?
I would hate to say expert. That's being a little over the top. Definitely intermediate. I actually have, I'm sitting over there. I have, the first one I started was Robert's Rules for Dummies. That was my introduction. And then the second, Robert, and the newly revised. With each municipality that I've worked in, we use Robert's Rules. I was looking to be a certified parliamentarian at one point. I am very familiar. There has been several training opportunities, being a part of the Alaska Municipal Clerks Association as well as the International Association. We, every year, have trainings at both and they're very thorough. That's one of the main parts of being a municipal clerk, especially during a meeting. A lot of council members may get hung up on too many seconds to the motion or getting lost within the meeting. And it's our responsibility to ensure that we guide everyone through the meeting and parliamentary procedure is most certainly one of the important points.
Thank you. And please give me the process for a motion to reconsider.
Motion, second. Reconsider, you would need a second to reconsideration. The reconsideration would be voted on first and then the main would be voted after as a wrap-up.
Okay. And if the chair is making a parliamentary error during a meeting and you were aware there is an error, how would you handle the problem?
I would request a brief at ease to discuss that with the presiding individual. If they needed further or if it wasn't taken as well and thought that my opinion was incorrect, I would request the attorney to also participate in the discussion. In my experience, most attorneys are pretty educated on parliamentary procedure as part of, one of their duties. And between the three of us, we would come to an agreement as to how to proceed.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Our next question will be from Councilmember Nelson.
What is the biggest mistake you ever made at work? Explain to us what happened and why that mistake comes to mind. What lesson was learned?
The first thing that comes to mind is a public notice. That's super important to ensure that you get the information out to the community. And there was a time that I missed the deadline. And I had to scramble with the clarion, who was very receiving, thankfully. And we were able to get it out a day later. We had to postpone the meeting due to the requirements of posting requirements. So that was a huge faux pas, for sure. I learned from that to ensure I had reminders all over. A reminder a week ahead of time, a reminder two days before. I had probably five sticky notes placed on my computer. A lot of reminders to ensure that that was done on time and not make that mistake again.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Our next question will be from Councilmember Chilson.
Okay. While holding a publicly held position, you would be expected to interact with members of boards, commissions, and citizens on a regular basis. What would you need to consider when communicating with these audiences in your official capacity as a clerk?
I think it's important to have patience with communication, especially with large groups. I oversaw seven committees and commissions with the city of Kenai. And of course, monitoring elections. You have a lot of interaction with residents. And I think it's important to be neutral. There's times where you have commissioners or counselors that don't see eye to eye. And it's being flexible, patient, listening, and being able to communicate and articulate in ways that it's understandable for each individual, each individual who's unique.
Okay. And following up on that, how would you initiate a difficult conversation with a council, board, or commission member, coworker, or member of the public with whom you disagree on an important topic or issue that must be addressed?
For clarification, is it something that I disagree with or two commissioners disagree from each other?
With whom you disagree with.
Again, I'm very patient, but I'm also very forward and direct. I think we can come to an agreement. Of course, as a clerk, I use many references in order to provide the most correct information. So whether it be charter, code, statute, Robert's Rules of Order, there's not many other things we're going to have a disagreement on. Pretty easy to get along with. And like I said, flexible and patient. So if there is a disagreement, we're going to sit down and have a discussion about it without an audience, just the two of us, and hopefully come to an agreement on how to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Our next question will be from Councilmember Carey.
Thank you. An election will take place in two weeks. You discover a discrepancy between city code and state statute that affects voting procedures. How would you handle the issue?
Nice. So, it would be a discrepancy for voters or a discrepancy on the ballot?
My question is a generic.
A discrepancy, as I stated before, the discrepancy was the posting, and I had to rectify that. There's been delays. There's also been times when the ballot, although you presented it accordingly, that there's been errors on the ballot. So, once you receive it, you're scrambling to have them rectify the situation and get them to the office prior to the election. There's also been a time that the radio station, excuse me, although they had all of the correct information, did an advertisement on the radio and gave the absolute incorrect information. So, I contacted them, KSRM, I think is the name of it, contacted them, spoke with the manager, spoke with the individual to what had happened, and they did another redaction and provided the correct information immediately.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Our next question will be from Councilmember Ruffridge.
Thank you. Have you ever been given work-related feedback by a supervisor that you had something specific to work on as an area of improvement?
My evaluations were pretty good, surprisingly. However, my last evaluation, I think it was, it was employee retention. There were deputies that came and gone. I didn't have one deputy. My deputies were part-time for a period of time, and I found it difficult to retain a deputy clerk. I would go through training, and they would attend the AMC with me. I just had a hard time. I don't know if the job was overwhelming. But that was the feedback, was retaining a deputy.
How did you react to that feedback in that moment?
I was a little shocked. I believe that I treated my deputies, my election officials, very fairly. I'm very personable and flexible, so I was pretty taken aback by it. And that position, it is difficult, especially when it's part-time. So, a lot of the deputies that I had went off to other positions within the community that were full-time with full benefits. So, of course, I did kind of take it personally, but we finally, I was able to get a full-time approved, and that rectified the situation. We were able to retain a full-time deputy rather than a part-time.
Thank you. So, in your opinion, did that feedback have merit?
It did, absolutely. It made me take a look at the process and if I was delegating too much to the deputy and how much would be appropriate for a deputy rather than a full-time employee. So, I sat down with the deputy and discussed duties and what they were comfortable with, and wanted to get on the same plane on what I expected and what they wanted.
Thank you.
Next question will be from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, and thank you again for coming today. Can you please explain your experience with supervising others?
In each position that I've had as a city clerk, I did have individuals that I supervised. Also, with election, I had several election officials that I supervised. I'm comfortable with supervising individuals. As I've said, I'm very flexible, I'm very patient. I'm easy to get along with, but when it's time to be firm for deadlines, I am. But it's, I make sure that everyone is aware of their responsibilities and their duties so we can work together as a team. I think I've always been lucky, except for the one, she ended up opening her own business. I've been very lucky with the deputies that I've had. They've been very receptive.
Thank you. Could you also please describe your management styles?
I know I've said these words over and over. I am flexible. I am patient, but I am very firm on deadlines. I ensure that the individual is comfortable with their duties. I make sure to include the individuals in other things that they wouldn't typically do in the office. So, attending conferences and ensuring that when I have to put on a function or some type of a celebration, I include them in all of the details. So, it's always a team effort in my office. I hope that it comes across that way. So, I don't over-delegate, and I'm open to communication. I think that's the key for the office to be run efficiently.
The next question will be from Councilmember Hutchings.
Please share an example of how you helped coach or mentor someone, and what improvements did you see in them?
Excuse me. I'm trying to think what I can come up with. Of course, the deputy, that's a daily function of the clerk, is to mentor. And I've seen with a majority of my deputies, they've been very receptive to it. I'm trying to think of one example, elections, and being done in a timely fashion and mentoring the individual on the process. Something a little less extreme would be packets. Mentoring and molding the individual to continue making the packets that council is comfortable with. It seems that, and this is all across the board, everyone has their own vision and how they would prefer to do things. So, mentoring the individual on what is acceptable with council, I think, is important.
Thank you.
Our next question will be from Councilmember Nelson.
Why do you believe that you are a strong candidate to be the next clerk for the City of Saldatna? And if you were to be selected for this position, when would you be available to start work?
I would be able to start work immediately. I'm not currently working. Could you repeat that question, please? I answered it backwards.
Certainly. First part of the question, why do you believe that you are a strong candidate to be the next clerk for the City of Saldatna?
I think I have the experience, 20 years' experience working in three different communities. I have a vast understanding of the position. Each community is unique and does things a little bit different, which has made me a more efficient clerk to see the job done from different aspects. I think I could bring a lot to the community. I am a part of both Kenai and Saldatna. I know the residents. I know the process. I believe that I would be able to satisfy the need for not only council, but the community as well as administration. I believe I would be an asset, again, due to experience and the things I've been able to learn throughout different communities. To bring that to this community, I think would be beneficial. And again, I'd be able to start when council would like that to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the prepared questions we have for you today, and we thank you for meeting with us to interview for the position of city clerk. Do you have any questions for us about this opportunity?
First of all, I want to say thank you for letting me Zoom in with being sick. I didn't plan on that happening, but I really appreciate it. Thank you. I did have a few comments. I, of course, went over all the information on the website. And the biannual audit of the city's records management program, and as well as department training, I think is fantastic. It's very hard to get departments to participate in the program. So, I think the city and Shelley and whomever else was involved did a fantastic job, and I hope to be able to continue that. What is the city manager's function within the clerk's office? How do they interact? And as a city manager, I'm not sure. Who does a clerk report to? Is it council, or is it the city manager?
She, the city clerk would report to the city council. They're under a contract with the city council.
Okay, I see. So, that would be my direct. So, I'm curious as to how, and maybe you can't really speak on this because you're not Ms. Queen. I'm just curious how they interact, and do they work on agendas together? Or does the clerk work with council? And if I do work with council, is there one designated person, or is it the body?
It would be mainly between, working between with you and the city manager.
Okay.
It's a working relationship.
Fantastic. The last question is, when are you looking to have an individual start? And what is the process that you'll be using in order to hire? Timeline, actually.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Our timeline right now is, once we conclude the interviews, we will meet in executive session, discuss the candidates, and following the executive session today, we will be making a decision on what the next steps are that the city will be undertaking. So, by the end of our meeting today, you will know what our next steps are going to be.
Fantastic. One last question, because you mentioned executive session. Does the clerk attend your executive sessions?
Depends on the issue.
Okay. I see.
Not for this meeting?
Obviously, not personnel, but other matters regarding the community. Okay. I think those are all the questions that I have.
Thank you.
And again, thank you very much for letting me attend via Zoom, and I hope this will clear up by tomorrow.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for a 10-minute recess? I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings, and thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Any objection? Seeing none, we will take a brief 10-minute recess here by unanimous consent. Item four on the agenda, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Inappropriate comments regarding the candidates will not be allowed. I see no one in chambers. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App uses by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Do we have any hands raised?
I see no hands raised.
Seeing no hands raised, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council comments. And we will start. Mr. Carey.
I had a question, actually, yeah, Mr. Mayor. How will the information that we have been generating here in our sessions, and particularly these score sheets, how are they to be used? Are they public information? Basically, what happens to them next?
What happens to them next?
The major question is, are they public information? Are they going to be shared? I understand we still have some more to do. And so, before I do anything more, I want to know what's going to happen with what I've already filled out.
Vice Mayor Parker.
If we could ask the human resources manager to answer?
I'm not sure that I'll be able to answer to whether it is a public document. Acting city clerk might be able to answer that better. But that information is going to be for you guys to get together during executive session and discuss the interviews that have taken place and decide the best way to move forward.
Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
So, my question then to the council, then it's up to the council. How does the council plan to use this information? Oh, excuse me. I see the clerk got a finger up.
If I could defer to the city clerk for right now?
Through the mayor, the score sheets are part of the deliberative process and are not generally public record. I can follow up with the city attorney if that becomes an issue.
And I was told by the human resources manager that this information is to be retained by the Human Resources Department for a period of up to two years.
Is that with names on them? The information in terms of scoring can be a general scoring, but are they going to be retained with the name of council members on them?
Go ahead.
Thank you for that question. So, the information that I provided at the end of the interview process will be retained for two years.
Thank you.
If I might, for the most part, and we're seeing this right now with the former director of the Permanent Fund, human resources files, our files, are our own personal records and usually are only released if that individual says they want them released to the public.
Moving on to council comments, item five on the agenda. We'll start with Mr. Ruffridge.
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Carey. Vice Mayor Parker.
No comment.
Mr. Chulson.
No comments.
Mr. Nelson.
None.
No comment.
Well, that was quick. We'll move on to executive session. City clerk interview, city clerk interview review under AS 44.62.310, subsection C2, subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person. In accordance with Alaska statutes 44.62.310C2, the discussion of the city clerk's interview is a subject that may tend to prejudice the reputation and character of an applicant for city employment. Therefore, may be discussed in executive session. Once the council returns from executive session, a motion may be made giving direction on the next step in the city clerk recruitment process. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? Vice Mayor Parker.
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a specific motion for entering executive session that I'd be happy to give. That's okay.
I was going to have the clerk read it.
Okay.
Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session. And for this portion of the executive session, it will include the entire city council, the mayor, and the human resource director, Jessica O'Regan. For those attending through Zoom, the Zoom meeting will end and will not be resumed after the executive session. There is no additional business to be taken up after the executive session. However, after the executive session is over, the meeting will briefly resume at saldatna.org/streaming. We are going into executive session at this time.
Can the clerk read us into executive session?
Say what?
Can the clerk read us into executive session?
Can the clerk read into?
Read us into executive session.
Just need to add that the applicants to be discussed have elected to have the discussion take place in executive session. The executive session, as Mayor Whitney stated, will include Mayor Whitney and city council members. Human Resources Director O'Regan will be included when council requests her presence.
Question.
Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. In this executive session, will we be discussing the written interview question answers from the applicants?
Yes.
Is there a reason why these are being handled in executive, no, why the answers are being handled in executive session? We had questions which we asked them, and again, it was done publicly. Is there confidential information or legal information or monetary information that is part and parcel to answering these questions? I'm not understanding why these questions have to be handled in executive session.
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Carey, these questions, because of the deadline and when they were turned into the city, have had very, very short turnaround. We haven't had time to assess whether or not any of the answers may be information that should be included in an executive session. Once the executive session is over and the HR director has had a chance to review them for materials that should only be presented within executive session, they will then be part of the public record.
Thank you.
Without further ado, we will enter into executive session with the council, the mayor, and human resource director. Executive session.
I will make a motion to come out of executive session.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any objection to coming out of executive session? Seeing none, we are out of executive session by unanimous consent. Is there a motion to be made? Vice Mayor Parker.
Councilmember Whitney, thank you. I move to set a special meeting on February 9, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of a follow-up interview for the Saldatna city clerk position. This special meeting will be held in person.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, motion passes by unanimous consent. And we will have an executive, excuse me, a special meeting starting at 5:00 p.m. on February 9. Seeing no other business before the council, I'll make one announcement. The next regular city council meeting is Wednesday, February 9 at 6:00 p.m. And there will be a special session of the city council also on February 9, starting at 9:00 p.m., excuse me, 5:00 p.m. And having no further business before us, we are adjourned.